Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whatever due justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody got your copies of the minutes?
Yes.
From the previous meeting?
Yes.
Any corrections, additions? Any problems?
Make a motion to accept the previous minutes.
Aye.
On paper?
Aye.
Okay, claims and warrants, end of month, November 2023, $60,269. December 21st meeting, $267,351.58. And we've got a claim from Industrial Supply for $213.47. You have to vote on that if you have this thing.
I'll make a motion where you approve the claims and warrants. Senator.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrants for 1122, 1130, 127, 1214, in the amount of $50,193.20.
I move to accept the payroll warrants for $50,193.20.
On paper?
Aye.
Bank reconciliation is for the end of the month, November 2023. For the town, $836,125.80. For payroll, $2,758.73. And customer deposits, $37,560 even.
Make a motion to accept the bank reconciliations.
No second.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you. And we have one billing adjustment of $101.19.
I'll make a motion where we approve the billing adjustment. Senator.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you. Now let's just sign away.
Oh my God.
Just gonna ask, anybody need any pins?
She needs pins for Christmas.
Is that a Bender pin?
Yes, they're all Industrial Supply pins. Terrible.
Well, it's a good statement, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. Well, we've got Dustin here and we've got Cindy here, and I'm sure we all got good news about the water project, right?
We are here for the water project. Just to give, so the reason we're here is SRF, we've been waiting for SRF to give their PER approval. And that's a letter that says PR has been approved as is, blah, 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 blah. And then Cindy can submit that with all the other work that she's put together for the application that is due tomorrow. SRF notified us yesterday, I believe, that they were not going to be able to issue the PER approval for two reasons. The first reason being the archaeological reconnaissance survey. They completed that, Larry Stillwell with OACO, completed that and sent out the report. Yesterday, I think, well, everything kind of came to head yesterday, I guess. Report was good, I didn't find any indies or any artifacts or anything like that. But they do, once the report gets submitted to DNR, Shippensburg, the state historic preservation office, there's a 30-day public comment period so that, I don't know who watches those things, to be honest, but you're allowed to comment on them and submit anything. So 30 days was started today. So SRF cannot issue, they can't even issue a PR approval without Shippensburg's clearance. They're gonna have that, Oprah's the same way, they would not have been able to approve the application without Shippensburg's clearance as well. So that stops it there, but even before that same time, whatever you want to call it, SRF has said, we looked at regionalizing with Rockville and Meca Indian American Water. They've accepted that Rockville's not feasible for a multitude of reasons, mostly being cost, it costs like $5 million more than the RO treatment plant. And we said, regionalizing with Meca Indian Arctic Water wasn't feasible in the PER. And we didn't really put much additional thought, we had thought about it, we just didn't put our thoughts on paper. They came back and said, we need to see how you got to that. So we submitted a cost estimate with some assumptions of how regionalization with Meca Indian American Water would go. We assume that they have capacity, we don't know that yet. But they do have high manganese, their manganese is like .08 milligrams per liter. .05 is the MCL for that contaminant, emerging contaminant for EPA. So we put together two estimates, one saying Montezuma accepts the high manganese and they just kind of, you guys just administer polyphosphates, sequester it, and you go back to life. And then another where you build a treatment plant after you purchase it. So obviously, if you build a new, if you're on the main all the way to Meca, you pump it here and then you treat it, it's gonna cost a lot of money, it was like 12 or 13 million dollars. So that's way more than the RO. We can eliminate that almost immediately. Not almost, we can eliminate it immediately. Once you, if you assume that we'll just take the water without treatment, the cost is very comparable to the RO water treatment facility. Long-term cost, not capital cost, but long-term cost for like $50,000 a part of the year planning period. So SRF is still making us dig deeper into that. So they've told, so we've contacted, we finally got ahold of Indian American and somebody that can tell us everything there is to know about Mecca system, capacity, availability, water quality beyond what's publicly available at the ready. So SRF said, yes, we've really put a wrench in your guys' planning now. You guys were gonna go in on, and SRF in the meeting did say, Camille said, I told you not to worry about, we have your approval, and we were not able to deliver that. Apologies, apologies don't mean anything, you know, obviously. So that obviously puts us where we can't apply for Oprah come tomorrow. But they did kind of offer some lean, I don't wanna say leniency, because that's probably not the right word, Scott, but they said, we're gonna go through this process, we're gonna evaluate in depth more Indian American. I think we can dispel that because you have to purchase water and it puts you at the mercy of a large water corporation in Indian American. So I think we can get past that, it's just gonna take some time. So maybe by the end of January, we can have SRF to the point where they accept that RO is the best option. Because they're kind of, right now, they're leaning on, you guys also have wastewater issues. And SRF is understanding those to be maintenance-related. So they're concerned if you put in an RO water treatment plant that if you don't maintain something that expensive, it's going to fail eventually. And they don't want you, they don't want to give you the money, and they don't want you to waste the money to purchase something that you're unable to maintain. We've had that discussion with them, that that's not the case at the wastewater treatment plant. It's not going to be the case now that what you guys have at the water treatment facility, you know, chemicals and things, is in excellent condition, given its age of 1970, 60, whatever it was, I'd have to look it up to see exactly. It's in great condition, it just doesn't meet it, nitrates and manganese are your issue now. So I think that we can persuade them to the correct, where we need to be, it's just gonna take about another month. With that being said, SRF is willing to extend the timeline, they have that offer package of about $6 million that was supposed to be closed on by the end of July. They've now said, we've put you into this corner now. We've made you spend more time to evaluate this option, make you miss out on this. It was our deadline, we can extend the package to, you know, further in the end of the summer, August timeline. The good news being, if they extend it to the August, September timeline, we could potentially apply for Oprah in the next round, which would be, was it June?
June or July.
Application, so you'd apply in June or July of next 2024. And then you'd get award in August, and we would have design ready. So as soon as Oprah awarded, we'd advertise the next day in the newspaper and we'd get, you know, bids underway in September. The biggest hang-up to that, kind of pushing the timeline back, we'll call it three or four months, is we are on that IDEM agreed order compliance schedule. That needs to be in, being compliance by October 2025. If we delay construction by four months, the start of construction by four months, obviously, we're gonna have to extend compliance by four months. SRF did say they would make some phone calls down to IDEM to help us push that schedule out. Obviously, it is a health concern of the nitrates, so that doesn't have that situation at all. But it does keep you out of violation enforcement fines and that kind of thing. So that's a ton of information, Cindy or Scott, did I miss anything, skip over anything too fast that I should have?
No, no. It's really just a few months, ultimately. And as soon as there was an archaeological, I told Cindy this today, as soon as there was an archaeological thing that kicked up, I should have realized it's gonna mess things up because we didn't have, we had to hit everything perfectly to get that in. So, but it's not just that, it's also this regionalization thing. And so, fine, will take a few more months. You know, the, I don't know what the data is, but I did talk to Eric a couple times and Dustin. They think the numbers, they're, they just are getting the numbers from Meca. There's a big concern that Meca doesn't have the capacity to serve their customers and your customers as it is, and it would require potentially putting in a new well, which would obviously then increase the cost considerably. So, and the feasibility of it, you know, I expressed our concern about putting another well in, are we just gonna get more bad water 10, 15, 20 years from now? And then have to put in another treatment plant because, or the rules are gonna change on manganese or whatever. So, the other thing that is complicated here, though, is we also want to go ask Oprah for money for the sewer project as well. And you cannot, we're still fine-tuning some of these rules. You cannot, certainly cannot apply for two projects at the same time. Now, we might be able to get this done in a way where we get one, I'm looking at Cindy, you get one awarded, start construction, and then put in for the other one, I don't know. So, it pushes back everything a few months, it doesn't mean there's not a project, it's just, and it is helpful. You know, SRF and IDEM are literally, like, their offices are, to get, last time I went to SRF, I had to walk through IDEM's offices to get through SRF's offices, they work like, they are, they work.
SRF is technically the financial banking side of IDEM, they fall under the same statutory rules and.
So, the fact that they are pushing us back should get us out of, we're not gonna be in trouble with IDEM. IDEM will understand, I think, that we don't have an option here. But, you know, it's, it's not bad news, it's, bad news would be, well, they pulled the funding or they're gonna make us do this or something like that. It's just not as, it's not gonna happen as quickly as we hope, I think that's the takeaway.
And feel bad for Cindy who busted her tail, didn't get everything lined up for tomorrow and had the wrong kind of.
Because Camille told me it was the second time that they've ever not made it. She said that when I talked, because I talked to her a few weeks ago, she said, oh yeah, I understand, yep, we'll get it, that'll be fine. She felt bad about it, but things came up and.
Yeah, and I would say as far as the Oprah application, I mean, it's not that it's wasted time, it's just things that will need to be updated, you know, for the new round of application, if you still choose to do that. So, it's there, it will just need to be updated, which would be a lot easier than starting over.
What's throwing an extra four months into the system gonna do to the price of the overall project? Prices are gonna go up, I'm sure, in the next four months.
I hope, I hope.
Are they gonna take, you gotta take that into account when they, when they grant us.
So that is something that we've been watching, we did have a discussion with, so we've been talking, we've been continuing with our design and everything. So we've been in talks with SRF, one question that did come up is, when did you guys start planning this project? Because the BABA, the BABA, however you say it, Build America by America, that extends the American iron and steel policy to plastics and other construction materials, you know that. You guys were technic, if you'd, if we had called when you signed your contract with HWC to start the study portion of it, as when you started, you guys would fall under the BABA rule and we'd have to follow all those kind of things. They've accepted that you guys started planning the project when you gotten, when you got in touch with Mike Novak. So that means, we still follow the American iron and steel, but we don't have to follow all the rules that go with the rest of the BABA Act as far as plastics and lumber. All that stuff is already made in the US, it doesn't have all the paperwork and the bureaucracy and the red tape that goes with it. So you're good from that standpoint, and to kind of go off that, we have this estimate that we put together that we think is accurate, to the best of our knowledge. Once you bid the project, if we bid the project and it comes in high, SRF, and not to say they do every time, but in the past, if they, you know, we've seen your estimates, we thought they were, because they check those too, they don't go through, find who come, but if we said this project's gonna cost a million and they're like, yeah, I think it's closer to eight, they would have red flagged that. They think we're on track and they think it's as accurate as it can be. If you bid and it comes in high, SRF hasn't in the past come forward and say, we understand, we pushed it back three, four months, we'd like to help offset some of those costs if it's $200,000 higher than we expected. And we've seen them give anywhere from the full 200 all the way down to zero, but maybe they meet somewhere in the middle. You know, best case, Hillsdale, for example, came in ridiculously high a few years ago, it's been several years now, but they, SRF.
They did the same thing.
They pounded up the whole thing, they said, you know, you're over $300,000, we understand you can't afford it, so here's $300,000. I don't say they do that every time.
Yeah, the cost going forward without the, without the Oprah money is 700,000 potentially. So, so it's, I think, worth it to delay things a few months to try and get that extra 700,000, would be my thought. And it also continues to give us more time to work with SRF and show SRF we're doing everything we can, so. You know, I still don't understand how, I'm sure there's some formula to what they do, but they find money, if that's what I explained it, and, and, and so, they usually will look very hard at what your rate impact's gonna be and give you enough money to get your rates down to a level that they think is acceptable. And so, you know, it's, it's, in some respects, I guess, I like, I don't know how much weight this will carry, but the fact that they delayed us and things like that, I think, will be a factor in their decision-making when it comes to final numbers. So, and they are the, I mean, they're the, really the only option we have anyway, so it's not. You know, they fund every, almost every water and sewer project that's done in, I mean, at least around here, is SRF.
Yeah, that's, and going back, so when we gave them more information, we made the, our base, our only assumption was that Meca had capacity and they were still more expensive than the RO treatment. And that's not a plan with numbers, that was just us writing them down and see where they fall. And so we thought, the assumption we made was conservative from their standpoint, because if they do need to increase capacity, it's just gonna drive the cost, the gap even further. But since we said we made assumptions without data, they are, for whatever reason, really harping on that. And I don't, I don't know why, I know regionalizations, they're our favorite buzzword around there.
It's a big push, it really is.
If SRF could make everybody just one utility, you know, all the towns just interconnected, I think they would feel like they won. I don't know why that is, but I think it's weird that they're pushing the Meca and Hillsdale's 10 times closer and they're not asking us to look at that any further, because it's not feasible either. But I'm surprised they weren't pushing back on that one a little bit more than they have, but I don't know.
We do as we can.
I guess we play the game and I don't have a lot of, we had a conversation, Eric talked to Camille two or three times this week, and we had a conversation with her today, or yesterday, they're all bar together. I apologize, but anybody have any questions? Log me talking, the financial stuff are boring, so.
So here, you just continue on with your part.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just hold, I will let Oprah know to not to expect our application so they don't think something funky happened. And, you know, a little bit of explanation about just some things from SRF, why we're not applying, pass proposal this time. Hopefully, look for us in 24.
It's not that we don't want to.
No. Do you need signatures on your invoice before you leave?
I don't need anything. Just came here to.
I mean, yeah, I told Dustin he had to come and tell you.
Your Christmas.
Thank you.
It's, it's, it's fine, you know, these things, I mean, you think you have everything lined up. These projects have, everything really does have to, it really has to come together and we're just not quite where it's coming together yet, so.
Well, thankfully, the archaeological study didn't come up.
Yeah, that's, I mean, they didn't find it. Find anything that they were concerned about, they essentially dug down and they found remnants of old building, which they know that, I told them that there was an old Boy Scout building or whatever, and they dug down to a little bit and they're like, well, we found gravel. And if there's gravel and steep slopes like this, the chances that there was ever a, ever a, I don't wanna say civilization, but if ever any inhabitants that stayed there long-term, you know, you don't put your house, people build on the side of floodplains, but people don't build in the floodplain like that. They were smart enough back then to know when the river comes by it that fast and it was up that fast, you don't stay there. All those artifacts are down in evidence of the Gulf right now, so.
Any questions for gentlemen or Cindy?
Just wait until.
Just a slow process.
Yeah.
Very slow.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, thanks.
Go on, get up. You wanna leave our presents half out of it?
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
All right, did you get Nathan or?
Yeah, Nathan, I know, did we get you what you needed?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're ready for me, I'll just talk to you for five minutes and give you a little update real fast. I want you guys to look at something real quick. This is potentially what I'm planning right now, and I don't wanna run it past everybody just so you kind of know. No, you guys can sit down. But this, this is potentially what we're planning, and I think by February 1st, I'll have some formal, professional plans drawn up. There's a few things with this layout and what I'm thinking about that I wanna run past you guys and I don't need a decision or an answer right now, but some of it does, I think, affect you in a way. And I'd just like to make sure everybody's okay with what I wanna do, and if you're not, then we discuss it and figure out what we can work out. But the gist of this is, I don't have the utilities on here yet. But Brad and John have been very helpful so far in the process, and Scott's been helping me recently as well. The utilities, we've got a good idea of what we need to do and where they're gonna connect and such. Both of them have to cross the road, we believe, not for sure, we might be able to keep the sewer on the same side of the street, but the water has to cross Water Street for the connection. I'll add those on the final plans and, well, by February 1st or so, I'll, maybe I can email everybody a copy of the file, the plan set or something. But the timber wooded area that's like adjacent to the foundations of the, of the bridge, I'm just not, what's there right now, for the most part, I'm not gonna touch anymore. I don't want to clear something that close to the bridge and somebody says, oh, I caused it to scour later on or something like that. So I intend on leaving that, but you can see, I'm planning on putting a patio on both sides of the. But you can see, I'm planning on putting a patio on both sides of the building, one on each side. And the stick build addition is kind of centered in the middle of the lot that I had already put in and connected to the building. And the idea behind that is all the new plumbing, I want to preserve the interior of that building as much as possible. And believe it or not, most of the concrete slabs in there are, they're not level. I'll need to level them, but most of them are in solid pieces and look very good. And I want to try and level all that and maintain it as much as possible. So I'm trying to keep bathrooms and new plumbing and everything underground as much as possible, water lines and such that would require cutting the slabs in this new stick build addition area. Now, the bar is going to be in, in the existing building and the part of the kitchen is going to be like an open kitchen where you can see us cooking inside while you're sitting down. That'll bump out into the building a little bit. There might be a few floor drains in there. But what's behind the bar and what's in the kitchen, nobody will visually see as a customer in the restaurant and the rest of it will be untouched. That's the main idea behind there. And I didn't label them, but the first, there's a number four is an entrance in vestibule right there toward Water Street between the addition and the building. There'll be some concrete handicap ADA parking spots right there adjacent to the vestibule. And all the other parking you see is just going to be like a stone gravel lot with some concrete bumpers. Then, the most important, the most important thing, well, for me, is trying to maintain water right now. Stormwater especially when it rains. And I'm down the hill there and everything kind of comes toward me and I don't want to place any burdens on the town. So I think that the biggest favor I'm asking is if you look at detail number three, the drive over curb and gutter. So that's like a four inch curb and gutter that's about 18 inches wide so that you can gradually go up. So where you see all these parking spots that come off of Water Street, I would pour a concrete strip or that curb and gutter all the way along the edge of Water Street and that would catch the water and run it down to number two, the circle by Patio Two, which is, there's a city storm sewer structure right there. And I like to channel all that water into that structure. And that curb and gutter, essentially, for me to install that, I'd have to go right on the edge of Water Street and like the outside one or two inches of the pavement. I'd have to saw cut that off so I got a nice, perfect, straight edge. Then I'd pour that concrete curb and gutter right up against that, all the way around the whole property. And that would take everything that comes down Water Street and where the fire pit is I put in there and off of Crawford. All that kind of goes into my lot. Now, that's going to direct it all down to the, there's a rip rap chute that Endot put in to carry all that stormwater right there. It'll go right and hit that. And this storm sewer, this stormwater structure, number two, currently right now, and this isn't a big deal, we could talk about it in the future years down the road, but currently, right now, all that stormwater from all those town blocks in that area, there's another, there's another structure up here I didn't put in a drain line on the north end of the property, near the property line. Currently, all that just goes on my property. It doesn't go to the river, the pipes are all busted. So what causes that is the old clay tile pipes that they installed for the storm sewer back in the day. When the river comes up and the river is covering the end of the pipe, then the pressure of all the water up high on the street pushes on it. It can't get out in the river, so it finds the weakest crack in all those joints. And it's usually weakest where it drops in elevation toward the river, the pipe underground. And both of those have ruptured and they've been tried to be patched over the years. And heck, even when the guys flush the fire hydrants, there's like four foot of water shooting up in the air down where all the grass is at and everything. Now, I'm not worried about that right now and it may not be a problem because I'm only worried about it if I get the stage in down here in the boat dock and I'm able to, you know, two or three years down the road, have like some outdoor music festivals and things like that in the summer with maybe 500 people on the banks of the Wabash. All that has to be designed and engineered with the Army Corps of Engineers. So I'm not worried about that stormwater and what's going down there right now. Only if I get the stage in and the boat dock in, that's going to be two or three years anyway. But the biggest favor I'm asking of the town right now is really if I can put in that curb and gutter and channel, and it already, all already naturally channels to that storm sewer that's there. The only issue with that structure is it's not a precast structure. It's really old, it was cast in place. And it has like metal bars that went across that were cast into the concrete. Some of those bars are missing. So like, I'm going to have a parking lot right there and sidewalk and all that stuff. And I'm worried about somebody, liability for the town. If, if, before we open, if all it would take is like a frame and a grate, what you put on the top of a storm sewer structure, you just put a new frame and grate. I've actually got something on top of it right now, so nothing happens. But it's not, it's not ADA compliant, it's not traffic rated, anything like that. But I think out of all I'm proposing here, that might be the only thing I would need out of the town is hey, once I get that parking lot in there and I get my patio in. And I did mention, I forgot to mention, number five on Water Street right in front of the building, just inside that curb and gutter is a sidewalk. You see where it goes from the vestibule down past Patio Two? So if people, if they're sitting on Patio Two, they can walk out of a door that's between my place and Water Street and walk down there. Another, another thought would be, hey, yeah, technically it's my property and the deed says I own it, but you guys have a utility easement that runs right there between the road and, and my property. So down the road, if, now, if you look at this, right where it says Water Street, that's kind of like the marking point where the new sewer line that's in right there, it runs in Water Street and you can see where the new cut is all the way down the road. So the curb and gutter, let's just say you put this in and then you have to do some work on the sewer line down the road. The only area that would be affected potentially is right here at Water Street and right where the fire pit's at and on the corner right there. The sanitary line, the new one that you guys put in the vacuum line there, it goes at a slight angle and it goes under, it would go underneath that curb and gutter just at that point. So hey, say down the road, something happened right there. You might have to tear out part of my curb and gutter in order to, to get to your sanitary line there. That would be maybe the only inconvenience down the road for you, that you might have to patch back a little concrete or something if we put that in. But I think that's minimal compared to trying to solve the huge stormwater issue and everything that's going on there. But that's the thoughts right now. I'd like to say also that yesterday, Tuesday, we were able to purchase the liquor license for the restaurant, the one that was Hub's Pub previously. That went up for auction again and it was non-competitive, so nobody else in town was trying to get it and we were able to easily get it. So I believe, I think John told me that there may be another town board meeting like early on in January. I'm probably going to come back and try and update you guys then because I think Scott got me what I needed. I just needed the ordinance from the town that proves that you guys allow the sale of alcohol. And I think that's the only thing I needed from you for, from the town's standpoint.
Is that a three-way or a four-way?
That's a three-way.
Three-way.
Yeah, beer, liquor and wine.
But no carryout?
There's no carryout, but I'm going to apply for everything. They offer a carryout option, but they have to try and approve it. Also, there's an off-premise catering. So if somebody want to have a party in Terre Haute and we catered it, I could bring alcohol and serve it there. I'm going to apply for all those and just try and, try and get everything in my belt. But the, I'll try and have the application completed and everything and get some feedback from the state before the next meeting. So if I need anything from you guys, I can come in, we can talk about it one more time. The application is due on January 18th to be completed, no errors, no mistakes. And they'll walk you through the process and you can submit it as many times as you need and they'll help you fix your problems. But after that, that's when you go through the 60 to 90 day notification period and they put the orange placard in the window and all that stuff. But all in all, the plan is I want to make this place amazing and I don't want to go into debt to do it. So I don't want to go to the bank and say, "Hey, I need a loan for 10, 12, 15 years and I need a half a million bucks or something." I don't, I don't, I don't want to feel like I've got to run this place seven days a week and if, if I shut down for Christmas for a week, I might, I'm losing money. Or the 5,000 profit I might make every month, I pay into a bank note. I just don't want to set it up that way. So, and to really deliver what my vision is and what I want to do, I think I need a little financial help. So the idea is I'm going to offer up to 35% ownership to somebody to help me fund this. And so the idea is to get a whole plan set, put together, everything beautiful, P and L, liquor license, property bought, all that stuff and have a beautiful package by February 1st. And then I've had conversations with a lot of people, you know, that month, February 1st and March 1st is when I'm going to really try and fund the project. And then I look, you know, and I'm not going to get into bed with somebody that says, "Oh, I gotta go to the bank and try and work this out" or something like that. I want this to be fast-paced, I want this to try and be open by August 1st, 2024. And if I can get funded, then we would do a fast build and have it, have it built and ready to go in about four months and probably have about a month of soft opening and working the kinks out and things like that before we, before we really do a grand opening. But that's what I'm shooting for, that's best case scenario. And worst case scenario is that, you know, I don't think I'll wait two to three years. I think that if I don't get it funded by summertime, that I'll end up probably doing it myself and trying to make it happen. And it may not be the grand vision that I, I, I want it to be right up front, but I'm really not interested in that. I really want it to be something special for the community. And, you know, if it's going to be great, it's got to be great from the beginning. I don't want to try and shoehorn something great into it. I want people from the very beginning to say, "Wow, this place, this, this, this and this and this." I want people smacking their lips and loving the food. Like, I'm, we're not there to put on a show, we're there to feed people and that's what I want to do the best. But that's the idea. We just wanted to come let you guys know about the liquor license, say thanks for the support so far through Covered Bridge and the help from everybody. And we'll keep pushing on, keep pushing on our end and hopefully, hopefully you see us start to work with you guys and get the utilities hooked up. And I think I'll have to pull some permits for all the concrete and stuff we're pouring with the town and check to see if there's anything else I need to do. But I appreciate your time. Does anybody have any questions at all?
Yeah, I do. Do you have a name for this place yet?
Yes, I'm glad you asked. So, so--
He knows the name.
So, you know, Monazuma used to be an Indian reservation, right? Last one on the east side of the Mississippi, 10 o'clock line from, you know, it's actually a rectangle, I think, back in the day. What they really said, it was like seven miles long and went three miles east, I think, or something like that. But it used to be an Indian reservation. And then also a restaurant, you make a reservation, right? So I think I'm going to name the restaurant Reservation.
Nice.
But we won't take reservations. I think it's going to be small. I was joking around with Mr. Falls, I think is it Alex? I was joking around with him, I said, "The place is looking great, you're doing good work." You know, Roadhogs though, I think you should name this place The Waiting Room. So when I'm packed over there, I can just tell people, "Hey, go over in The Waiting Room and I'll send you a text when your table's ready." That is what will happen, is they, on a Friday or Saturday night, we'll, we'll be busy and people are going to be, I'll put picnic tables down by the river and such, but we'll have it set up where we'll say, "All right, well, it's call ahead seating. We don't take reservations, so if you're coming Friday, call me at 5:00. We'll put you on the list," right? And then if you're at the top of the list, you get there, you get the next table and heck, you can go grab a couple of drinks at the bar and go sit at a picnic table down by the river and we'll shoot you a text on your cell phone when your table's ready. Or go over across the street to Roadhogs and hang out with them for a little while. But, you know, we're just super excited. I think it's going to be a great thing and I really, you got me talking now, but reservation and the name of it and the menu will have a lot of things that say Janet's on it. I know I shared that with you guys before, but I've made a decision that the inside of the restaurant is going to be curated with a little bit of family history and also it's all history of Monazuma. Like the Riverview Restaurant, what is that one Facebook page that Bill Hand is on and everybody with all the, "Hey, did you grow up in Monazuma? Do you recognize this?" Or, "Boy, I spent a lot of time on that thing." A lot of the stuff I see on there is what I want to curate the restaurant. It's like the old picture of Reservation. There's this one of when they're building the new bridge and you can see the foundations with the pilings and they're pumping water out and three cranes and everything. I think that was 1946 maybe, when they were building that. My grandpa fell off the central span, the center span and broke his leg and never worked again after that. And that's when my grandpa, Ted Harpold, who's like 81 now, he was five. And they went and bought this two-man chainsaw. He had a brother who was 14, a brother that was nine, and he was five. And their dad couldn't work anymore. So they bought that, this huge chainsaw, it goes from here to the table for two men. And they got it, his dad worked to get contracts to cut timber to put in underground coal mines. So those boys at that age, he went out and with his broken leg and sat on a stump in the woods and made sure they were okay. And they cut timber and hauled it to Tuscola for the underground coal mines there. And so I've got the mall chainsaw from 1947, they bought brand new. I got the picture of the bridge, I got pictures of him cast up and everything. Imagine surgery on something like that in 1946. But that's going to be a little thing on the wall and the story. And then my great-great-grandmother, if you guys know, you know, Elmo and Louise Rigan, who were Janet and Donald's parents, my great-grandma and grandpa. I grew up with them in Dana and I was with my great-grandma, oh, my whole life. And, oh, sorry, her mother, her mother's name was Indiana Keen and she was Cherokee. And her family got pushed to Indiana from west to east. And they settled in this area and she was the first one born in the state, so they named her Indiana. And Keen was their Cherokee name. And so I've got pictures of her with feathers in her hair and everything and looking all Native American. There'll be a little story about her on the wall and I need some pictures of boats being pulled down the canal with, you know, and I really want to pay some homage to Monazuma. One day I want to do on Main Street, I saw that photo today of all the Christmas lights and everything down Main Street. That's gorgeous. That's really, really nice. But, you know, those, those types of things, I want a picture of the White Sulfur Springs, the largest resort in Indiana that opened up in 1893 or whatever. Like, there needs to be a story about that in a beautiful picture. I did the same thing at the brewery in Terre Haute where the Velvet Room and that event space there. You walk in that building and everything that's curated on the walls and everything that's framed and all the stories. I did the same thing there and tried to, it's the same thing I want to do here. You know, it's where, where I grew up and where we all live. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
John, oh, John.
You ready for me?
Yes, sir.
Can't wait. That was pretty simple. The CAD system has been down to jail, so I can't fully relay any statistics. Basically, the only thing that's changed on the utility side is we poured concrete yesterday for the police garage finally, so that's progressing. Eco-infrastructure will be here after the first year to suck that holding tank out at the baggage station. And New Horizon is supposed to start the installation after the new year also of that building that you approved last week. And the guys have ran gas inside and they're working on the electrical right now, so. Been hit pretty hard with illness. I don't think we've had a full crew for three weeks now. It's pretty rough, but outside of that, everything's progressing. You know, just to touch a little bit on what Nathan, me and Brad McVonam met with him, to fix that storm sewer the way it needs to be fixed is not something that we probably need to take on right now or want to. Because once again, we're going to be digging in the riverbank and there's probably a whole lot of litigation stuff. So if we can avoid that for the time being and get him what he needs, that's probably a great idea. But I directed him to Scott for questions that I couldn't answer.
I've been emailing and talking to him, so he's doing everything, trying to do everything right. My book, so, and it looks fantastic, it looks, it looks so much better just coming across the river.
Yeah. He's done a great job.
Like, one of the places that I kind of question is, you know, that building is literally like four foot from the pavement, like--
It's very close.
It is very close.
But if you look down water, everything's like that.
Yeah.
And the utility right away is probably extends into the majority of this building.
It may, it depends, we'd have to go back and look at the flat and it may be that the street, they don't always put the street in the middle, you know.
So, that's when I, I mean, that was, I kind of directed him to you there because if he's, I mean, I'm not, he wants it to be nice, so I'll call them elaborate structures, but if he's going to fit elaborate things, like, we just need to define, we need to give him, if you set this here, just know that, you know--
Yeah. Yeah, we'll work with him and try and get that figured out and, you know. But it certainly looks great and--
It's great to have Monazuma on the map.
Yeah, oh, good, I mean--
No doubt about it.
I, you know, just having people in town to go out to eat and go to Walmart.
It'd be great.
Every time I go through Rockville, I see the 26th solar, I think, what the heck happened? Yeah. How'd that happen?
How did that happen?
You know, it used to be a place with a couple pool tables and--
Yeah, I thought he was crazy. When he did that to 36, we all thought he was nuts.
And I, and I see a lot of guys-- And I see a lot of guys on bikes, you know, and they're coming through town on their way there, and they like that drive, well, here's another place for you to stop and, with cooler not open. I don't know if it's coming back or not, I don't know.
I don't think so.
I do have a question about that, on Water Street. It was, and I'm not mad about this, because, John, plug your ears, I'm the one that would go up that and turn, but now, it's a stop sign. As of last week, it's a stop sign now, it's not a do not enter. I'm thrilled, but it's a stop sign, not a do not enter. And it's a stop sign on both sides of the road. So I'm thinking, did someone run it over and then they replaced it with a stop sign and not- Right there on Water.
On Water Street.
On the highway.
The do not enter signs.
Well, it was do not.
Not for sure, everybody was wondering what happened to those signs that we posted there, the do not enter, and who took them down?
Wonder if the state-
Some of the other stop signs?
It's a stop sign and not a do not enter.
I'm guessing it was the state, because the state was in, changed in their Western Street, different streets in town.
I bet they did.
I bet they did too.
They did that one- Good.
I don't think so.
I shouldn't have said anything, huh? Let's not change it back.
Well, they did that once before when Travis was superintendent, and he said, well, here's the signs, put them back up. And he said, you took them down, you put them back up, and they did.
I don't know.
Somebody needs to contact the state then, because you guys were notified, and we have an ordinance that states that do not enter signs supposed to be there.
Yeah, Sarah may know, but that was-
I hate it.
It was, there was a reason, you know, people tried to turn there, and then they're, you know.
And it's not too bad.
It's not that bad, right?
Yeah, and it's, it was, it's not too bad coming from the north. Like, going up on the south is terrible, and that's the real problem.
It's dangerous.
Because you can't see, in daylight, you can't see anybody coming through the bridge. If you go down-
Coming from the south. Coming from the gas station, that way, or from the-
That was the biggest-
That was the-
So maybe you need to sweet-talk him, or we can go outside and keep-
You can make motions.
I'm shocked that we haven't heard from the gas station owner, because everybody cuts that corner right there. They don't enter from stops though, now, they enter from-
Yeah, they just avoid it. And you can see a lot better from his parking, or his lot.
Nope, they updated you, but I believe the lights in the firehouse are done, right?
Yep, all done, looks great, get a chance, poke your head there, things are all good. Little bit of paint and-
Put your sunglasses on.
It's bright.
Whole new, whole new world in there now, so, little bit of paint here in the near future and update that.
Looks like I'm-
A little bit of time.
Quilting ladies, you're gonna have no trouble threading their leaves.
There is a water leak on Aztec Drive, if anybody reaches out to you, we're aware of it. Supposed to be tackled the first next week. It's nothing major, my understanding.
We're gonna change things up a little bit, Rick, you got anything on you?
Oh, no. Oh. Did I fix my nose?
No, I guess not.
I think I'm okay.
No, I just wish everybody Merry Christmas and hope you guys enjoy family time, and that's really it. I don't have anything except for that stop sign.
Kathy?
Just what's left on the list.
Scott?
I'm gonna send everyone an email every day or two. I've had this ongoing, trying to get the municipal code updated, and I'll work on it, we get it done, and then, well, we're getting ready to add this new ordinance, so I'd like to try and get that approved by you at your, maybe your early January meeting. It is, it, you know, it's, I don't know, I was gonna try and look it up here, it caught me, it's probably a hundred and fifty pages. Most of it's not new, but it's good to update that every once in a while, we can get it, it's all in Word, you know, we can put it online, we can kind of update it as we go from now. But it's never gonna be totally up to date as things, you know, change, but it is a handy thing to have. Like when Nathan emailed me about that ordinance, I knew you had one, and you can search it, you know, you can just search for the word alcohol, and boom, I found it in, you know, ten seconds. And was able to get it to him, get what he needed. So it is a good, handy way to do it as opposed to trying to look through hundreds of pages.
But I, not to interrupt you, but you kept me thinking, I did make that change in the cemetery rule.
There was something, there was a cemetery rule that, John, it's probably been there for a long time, but the state passed a law a few years ago that cannot prohibit firearms. And I caught my eye, and so I thought, well, not that I think that, you know, but we better just take that out of there or somebody will come yelling about how you can't do that. So feel free to go to the cemetery armed if you'd like.
Dan?
I have just a couple things. We're preparing for the chili cook-off on February seventeen, and the bench was replaced at the bridge, the Darrell Hall Brent Bridge, bench at the bridge, and it's there. Also, I was wondering, Kathy, would you happen to have any of the catalogs that have the park equipment in it? You used to give me those once in a while.
Like a Barco catalog?
Like the park equipment catalogs?
To purchase.
For signs or things like that?
I don't know if we've got one of those recently, but Barco, we used to get it from Barco and another company.
Okay, well, next time Paul's up there, if you would hand him that, I'd appreciate it. We need to purchase some signage at the parks. We have homemade signs, but the doors keep coming off of them with the wind, and we can't keep them locked and keep the papers in there on the boards, so we're gonna try to do something different. So if you could try to help me with that, I'd appreciate it. Next month-
We do signage too, and I have sold signs to Brad, so if you need a catalog-
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yes, that'd be wonderful. And next month, I'll have the report that I promised you with all the projects that we completed this year and what our goals are for twenty-four, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Scott?
Eight runs for the month, that's a hundred and thirty-seven for the year, so. See what the rest of the year brings, we'll start over again. Like you said, lights have been done, fans have been done, there's currently one incandescent bulb in the firehouse, and that's in the mechanical room, which we bought a light for that, but it wouldn't fit in there because it was too big. Maybe next time, get a smaller LED light bulb for that and try to make ourselves efficient. Five-thirty tankers up and running, it was down, if you had heard, had some fuel issues, that, I don't know if that's systemic from years back, where we've gotten water in systems and all that from the fuel around the county and whatnot, but those may start to plague us a little bit more here at the age of the truck. But we gotta fix, like I said, the CAD did the bill for that through, from MF.
You just sent it, okay.
So five hundred and sixteen dollars and some change, so. Appreciate everything you guys have given us this year, so. Been a successful year for the most part, as far as I'm concerned, and we'll see what next year brings, so appreciate it all.
Appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
We got a HWC invoice.
It just arrived.
Yeah. Sixty-six thousand dollars for the water treatment facility project. We got it approved yet.
I'll make the motion we approve the water treatment facility project for HWC at sixty-six thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Anthem Medical Insurance Renewal, approximately ninety-four-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents is the monthly premium with prior estimate included for the renewal period. So we need to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Anthem Medical Insurance Renewal.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
We got a resolution, two oh two three dash one two dash oh three, the transfer of funds. And we put it in the capet, and that's just to have everything reached and settled in the year.
Yeah, where we overspent.
We didn't underspend on anything, did we?
All the columns on the left. I'll make a motion we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash oh three.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's in contract and everything, but it's better than that plan.
Now, we've got the salary ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three dash one two dash oh two, and an amendment to ask for John to be taken care of in July.
The John thing is not any different than what you've already done, but Kathy's right, we should have done a, we did a contract, but we should have also done a formal resolution to amend the salary ordinance that was previously adopted, the state board accounts will want this.
Your ordinance has to match your year-end total, so that's what we're doing.
Even though we had, you know, so it should be the same, I mean, if there's anything that's different, it's a typo.
So I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number two zero two three dash one two dash oh two.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're doing an amendment salary ordinance for everybody else, two oh two three dash one two dash oh three.
I'll make a motion we approve salary ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash oh three.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye. Scott, like buying a car?
Yeah, we still work at tablets or something, we still work in tablets.
It's still on the list, along with a few other things.
Okay.
We're just looking for electronic signatures. But don't get them off the server. He said he's evaluating run-out ink, I said, well, don't get any pens left.
I write, don't let me give you any pens. The problem is, I'll put them back in my purse and try to use it another time.
One more's going soon.
Okay, then we got the twenty twenty-four metering dates, the disconnects, the non-payment date, and the observed holiday dates.
I'll make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-four schedule.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
What we're supposed to motion for?
And the other stuff is just, we have a thank-you card from the fire department, so I just copied it, imitation from Park Township, Park County, a letter from the Fringe County Tile Development, and I think that is it, yep.
And everybody has to go up and sign their-
No, I have them with me so that I can just take them back with me.
Good job.
Can you just take yours and pass it down? It's the annual anti-meptrism-
I think you're right, Paul, yeah. That's a do not bother me, well, he's often wrong anyway.
Yes.
You got birthday cake waiting on you? No cake?
Boy.
You can have cake afterward.
Is today your birthday?
Yes.
Well, happy new year.
Happy birthday.
I want to spend it with us.
Yes.
He's got a birthday card.
Thank you.
That's the hardest one ever, one out of one, one.
And everybody saw the note from Kathy on the back page?
I don't listen.
Oh, you're a lot nicer on this than she was when I went up there.
It's because I sprinted.
Yeah. All right. Thank that, everybody, anybody got anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody, for the year. Everybody had a-